Where at?
Ryan Pennyman's Park.
Yeah.
Thirteen this year.
Will everybody join me in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and her God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome on this chilly evening. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from November fourteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November fourteenth.
In a second. Motion to approve the December docket and allowance docket.
I'll make a motion to approve the December dockets.
And I also have your acknowledgement of your various reports. And this is acknowledgement and your packet is the detailed revenue report. Did you have any questions on the page?
Yes.
All right, Tammy Arnett, you have the floor, for shooting sports.
Hi. I guess we called and asked some questions of Pat, and that's how I got on the list. Down at Shooting Sports, there has been ground up, it looks like blacktop piled up and some sand piled up. And I know there's a brush pile and stuff, and it's just getting bigger and bigger. And this last year, we had, we kind of struggled because we have thirty to forty cars down there at a time. And there was no place for them to back up, turn around, get in and out, and park, because our space is getting smaller and smaller. So I just wondered if there was a plan on what we're gonna, you know, what's your plan for all the blacktop piled up down there was?
Have you been back recently or?
Um, I was there about, oh, it's five and, two weeks to thirty days ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I know they had that.
Well, what, that was leftover, that asphalt was leftover from grindings.
Right.
Uh, and of course, a lot of that stone was piled up there. We do have plans to move it.
Okay.
Uh, that was actually from our project we done, our stormwater.
Well, I knew that the, along the cemetery was all pour up, so I heard as a lot of that came from.
Actually, I would like to move some of, the brush pile, we just kind of got away from it. I mean, they, every time you got piled up, seemed like somebody's bringing in some more, you know?
Yes.
Uh, we've just got to get it burned up for, most part, get pushed up some more.
Can we work on it or?
If you'd like, just, I don't, you're gonna be careful.
If we do a hold of you or, like, keep ours?
No, right now, you can just go back about any time.
I mean, if we wanted to do something with it, would you be around with it?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just call the office and they'll get hold of me or whatever.
We just don't want to step on it too.
No, that's not a problem.
Is your name Scott or?
Uh-huh.
Okay, I didn't want to.
I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about the brush pile or you're talking?
Yeah.
Scott, what we have to do, what we need to do is check, I mean, we're not against it, but we need to make sure liability wise we're covered if you did the work down there. So we will check into that and let you know. Appreciate you offering.
What times you guys start?
Uh, we don't start till the first Wednesday of April.
Okay. Would you be working under a produce insurance or? I don't know how that would work since you're.
That probably is, it does not.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, if, because it's not, it's not for each.
What are you proposing then? Do you bring down heavy equipment or?
Whatever you'll let us do. I mean, we just, it keeps getting smaller, and they used to drive around, and we don't mind helping, but.
Scott, if you could just send, or whoever, Tammy, if you guys would just send us a proposal in an email or something like you would be doing, and then we can look into it and make sure we're covered, that's all we want to make sure. And you guys are covered too. We don't want any, we're not.
Well, we didn't want to be.
No, I understand, appreciate you asking, and it has, that burn pile's a benefit to the town, but it's grown and grown.
We had a lot of storms late this summer.
We, true.
We did have a problem with people taking heavy stuff back or shipping out after.
Yeah, that's our issue, but I mean, it's, we're trying to monitor it a little closer.
What I would like to do is that stone that's down there, that's been put, was put in, drooped, and then dug back out, so it's not really fit to put like uptown here on some, a drive or something like that, I mean, as far as right up here, right up public. But we do have the old drive that gets flirt around, we're supposed to keep open all the way around the backs are part of the wastewater plant. Uh, we use it part of the time. Uh, what I'd like to do is take that and move it back around on the back side, you know?
But I think what you're proposing is like the burn pile and stuff, aren't you, to clean it up?
Right, well, we, if you aren't going to use that, we, we can spread that and make more parking.
Yeah, if you send it to us in, you want an email, it'd be fine. An email so we can check it out, and then Jerry be your contact, I mean, once we give approval.
We just got to make sure we don't get over on the other landover.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're pretty close on the other landover right now. I mean, actually, I mean, the, we, actually, we're, we're inside of a, they're, they're got a hundred feet around us on the creek side all the way around, so.
We think it's a worthwhile project.
Yeah, and absolutely, to be honest with you, we are encroached on them some already. But it works both way, they're, they're over on us and us P squads do, so it's not, and we both know that.
Okay. Then the other thing I wanted to let you know is, we have that firing line down there. There's big, like, posts, telephone posts have been buried, and that's what we shoot against. We would like to, we're gonna work on that and make it, fix it up, replace the.
Whoever's equipment it is and stuff, you just also probably have to provide the liability insurance for, for that stuff.
Okay.
Make sure we're covered. But maybe it's better if, uh, once we get your proposal together and we meet down there and just walk through and Jerry, you guys can work together on dates and stuff.
We can do that.
That'd be funny.
We think, we think it's a worthwhile project. Uh, it's good for the county, good for, you know, our use, so.
Are you thinking you'd want to burn it and then bury what's left or?
There, it's been buried once, so it's gonna be, yeah, yeah, that's the problem, yeah.
Because it seems like there's some dirt and stuff mixed up, pushed up. I mean, we can sort through some of that, but I don't want to make a bigger mess than what.
Yeah. Yeah, let's, uh.
I'll do some talking and see what if I can find any place to, maybe we could haul something over or something.
Yeah, well, follow up with us and we'll just meet down there, or somebody from the town and Jerry will be there.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you for coming.
And we appreciate your time.
Um, Carroll County Health Department. That'd be you.
That should be me. I'm Angie Brown, I'm with the Health Department. Um, I'm here to talk to you about a property that you're all probably very familiar with. It's at five forty-eight, is that the property address, Main Street? The property is falling apart. The house is infested with all kinds of animals. The entryway, both the front and back, have fallen in so bad that I can't get into them to treat them for rats and rodents. Um, I literally stand in the yard and, and throw my stuff in through the window because I can't get into it. The neighbors are ringing my phone off the hook, wanting something done about it. The property is not livable in the state that it is in. I know there are, I've included in that, that packet there of pictures and the back taxes that are due, due on it. The, I believe Camden has some septic lanes on it. The neighbor at one time wanted to purchase the property for the lot, however, he doesn't want to pay to have it torn down, doesn't want to pay the back lanes and taxes on it, which are extensive. You can only forgive the, the lanes if the property is not habitable. In other words, if somebody says they're having a hardship and they can't pay their taxes, you can't really forgive those. But if it's not, it's not a property that is lived in, you can. It's my understanding. I called our county attorney, and basically, he responded with me, telling me that Camden is an incorporated town, so condemnation has to be initiated by the town council, cannot be initiated by the county health department. The only thing that we can do is tag it that it's not livable at this time, but we can't actually condemn it unless you condemn it.
Do you know of any statutory provision that's for forgiving the lanes or?
Um, my attorney does, and I can get those for you.
If you would send that to Pat.
Okay, all right.
And we'll share with yours.
He did say that he wasn't sure if you guys had adopted the unsafe building law, but if not, you need to do that in order to be able to condemn a property. I can, I can put do not enter signs up, I can put tape around it saying that it's unsafe, but the health department cannot physically condemn it. And it's my understanding area plan cannot condemn it because of you guys being an incorporated town. That being said, that means that the county can ask, will not pay for it to be torn down. So that is something that Camden would have to incur also.
Who's your attorney?
Ted Johnson.
Yeah, that's what we've always ran into before. It's, they call you, you call us, we don't have any power to condemn nothing, you know, because we're on the, we're on the zoning, you know, for the Carroll County, so it's a catch twenty-two and, you know.
Well, I'm not sure if, do you know if you have authority to condemn it? Because I was told I did not.
I was told that if the incorporated towns like Florida and Camden, that.
They have to be the.
They have to be the one to do it.
Who, who told you that or?
Our attorney.
Our attorneys, since you guys are incorporated.
Even though we don't fall under the county statutes?
Correct. And I reached out to Cindy Harmon, my attorney today, and I have not heard back from her. So after tonight's meeting, I'll have a better understanding of what we want to do moving forward, but.
Does this guy that's ringing your phone off realize that once this is all done, it's a cat's meow and who gets the property?
Yeah, I think so.
Because you might be paying a little more. I, I know he don't want to pay nothing. He wants just to have the property.
Yeah.
And he don't want to build a house, he wants to put a garage on it. So what I'm saying is, I live, my property connects to that, so I'm gonna be up. My daughter lives next to it, so she's gonna be up for.
Yeah.
So tell him that there might be a little bit of bidding war, and he might pay a little more than he should on taxes, so.
All right.
I mean, if he's burning your ear, you might want to.
Yeah, well, um.
Time to watch where he wishes for.
I've, I've had three different calls, two were anonymous and told me they were going to go to channel eighteen and make a big think about it.
Tell them to go because that property right now looks better than it has for fifteen years.
It does, it does, I know.
I mean, to be truthful with you, it looks better than it has for fifteen years.
The tarp and stuff that were on the front of it.
That's sad, but it's true.
I know. But, the only thing is, is that, um, we need to have a plan, if it's still around by summer, on who's going to mow that area back there.
We, you know, the back, it's kind of.
I know it is, but the problem with that is, it's hard to get to, but because it's not being mowed, there's snakes back there, there's, there's rodents, and, I mean, there's birds flying in and out of that top window where the, there is no window, and.
When you come down off of that back property where the trees have kind of, them paradise trees, okay, from them paradise trees, on's me.
Is that right?
That's mine, so.
Okay.
He was pushing all that dirt over on me, and I went back there and said, what are you doing?
Yeah.
So me and him never got eye to eye, so.
I didn't know there was a him, I thought it was just a, a gal.
Well, this was, then he passed away and then she got it, so.
Well, what I want to say is, as attorney for the town, I would not be satisfied for the town itself to get involved in tearing it down unless they do the ordinance. I've done work on the ordinance today, and the town can, by ordinance, adopt the statute with reference to unsafe buildings.
Right.
And it's quite a lit, a big statute here, you know, it's quite lengthy. And you have to give, you have to give notices, you have to have, have the ability, have the availability for hearings. There has to be a fund, what's called the unsafe building fund, which has to be implemented. And then, if you can't get all of the owners, if you don't know who they are, then you have to give notice by publication. It can be done, but it's not going to be done in a day.
Oh, I know.
And I have drafted a partial ordinance which simply says that we, we are, we could be, we can be governed by Indiana code such and such and such and such right there. And, and I think it's too, it's not ready for the town council to sign tonight, because I've just given it to them. But I did do some research on the ownership, and the ownership of that property is by the five children, is for the five children of Robert Richardson. And his wife has, Tiara, has a twenty-five percent interest in getting some money from it, if there's any money, which I doubt there is. But she would have an interest, but the children actually own it. I don't know whether these five children are adults or not.
They are not.
Are they, they're small? And if they're, if they're minors, then we have to, who's the guardian, who's, who do we serve for that? I mean, there are all kinds of problems, but they can be taken care of. They can be done just with diligent work and doing it. If the town tells me that they want to proceed on with that, then, then I'll, I'll draft a better ordinance and I'll try to get. Uh, I used to know Pat Richardson, who was his, in his mother, and I haven't seen her for years, but she could maybe give us the information about the kids.
Tia Richardson.
And who's the guardian, who's the custodian. I mean, it's, it can be done, but I don't, it can, of course, I don't make the decisions for the town council. But I don't want them to get into a problem with it, so that's why I'm recommending that they do nothing until, that they not take any steps on their own until the ordinance is in effect and until we've done all the bells and whistles. And I've talked too much, but you know, that's what I mean.
Well, no, that's fine, I'm just, um.
That's my job.
Tia Richardson came to my office and, um, well, she didn't come to talk to me about the.
Yeah, I'm over at the courthouse every so often.
I just happened to realize who she was, and so I jumped out of my desk and said, hey, you're the lady I need to talk to about your property. She came there to get all of her records for her children, because she was moving out of state. And I said, what are you gonna do with that house? Because it's, you have to do something.
The easiest thing would have been, if it had been sold at the tax sale, and then you wait till next September. Tax sales are always at the end of September, and then there's a commissioner, uh, the commissioners may get a certificate in March. And I'm, I've, I've talked to the treasurer, and she talked to the auditor, and nobody seems to know exactly what's going to happen to this property, because it didn't go for a tax sale, may go to the commissioner for his commissioner's certificate. And, um, but if, if, but somebody, I suppose now could pay the back taxes, and, and then, but that would start the year, it would probably start the year running. See, the year would have run from late September, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. But, and then at that point, the tax deed would have been issued, there would be no liens, somebody, whoever bought it could tear it down, rent it as an apartment building, raise rats or whatever they wanted to there, we'd see. This man back here has.
Uh, so, if it's gonna take, if it's gonna be a holdup for the children or whoever's gonna get the, did you say that she's gonna get money or? She's waiting on, to get a portion of the money or, is that the way I understood it? Because if she's not paying anything, or does it default all her, or, you know, the kids, that's supposed to get something? Is that all default now? If that was gonna be something that held us up, I mean, she's basically walked away from it and said, I don't want no part of it. Does the children still have it, or is it everything defaulted now?
It did, the key to it was to get it sold at the tax sale last September. Then we would be nine months from getting rid of the place, whoever bought it.
Didn't go up.
And it didn't sell at the tax sale.
Yeah, it didn't.
So therefore, that's what's put it kind of in a limbo right here. And I've done, well, quite a few tax sale property things, and, uh, once you get the tax sale deed, you've got it. You know, you don't have to, but the taxes now, the present taxes are around a little in excess of sixty-four hundred dollars, which is quite a bit. But anyway, I'll be glad to talk to anybody about it. You can call the office, I'll talk to you, you can come over. I'll do, but I have, I'm bound by what these guys tell me. I'm just an employee.
But see, the, the problem with the property was, if you would have bought it at the tax sale, then you owed that much, you owed that sixty-five hundred, then you owed another year's taxes, plus she ain't called to tell the town that she's off the septic. So she's still getting hit for a septic bill every month, because she's the, that house is the last well in the town of Camden. So they don't have water from the town, she has septic.
What's the town's stance on the, the liens for the sewage if, if?
Well, the state board of accounts is telling us, we can't forgive it.
If someone's.
Unless you tell us, unless your lawyer can tell the state board of accounts, there's a statute somewhere that will let us, then.
Then you guys would entertain that.
Yeah, we'd entertain that.
But on, on the forgiveness of the lien, if I have a lien on your property, I can forgive it because I'm a private citizen, but because we're dealing with the town.
Yeah.
We have to deal with the state board of accounts, and they will not approve of release, of voiding the lien, because it's a town property. You, you think anybody that has a lien can forgive the lien if he wants to, he or she wants to, but not when you're dealing with the town. That's the issue.
Yeah, we've already checked, and they said if it's up with the statute, we would, we'd entertain looking at it, so.
But now it's.
But they're not aware of any.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I ask him, well, that, the guy that's calling you, never got along with him, so, because I told him, I said, go have her quit playing beat it to your, you know, something, so you can have it right away, but he didn't want.
Cameron, you want to introduce yourselves, so?
Sure. I'm Cameron Gates, I'm the area plan director. Sorry I haven't been near the meetings with coaching sports, I don't get much free time, so. Glad to be here tonight, and, um, yeah, so whatever I can, I'll leave you guys a card when I leave, but whatever I can do to help in these circumstances, by all means, reach out to me and glad to see what we can do.
We need to do something to address how, I mean, I can't get into the property. I don't want to get into the property, but I just want to make sure that, you know, nobody else is going in there and.
Well, you said you could put the yellow tape around.
I can do that, if, if you want me to.
She was there two times last month with the U-Haul.
Was she?
So I don't know what she's hauling, but she was sitting there in the driveway.
She got it out of there, because you can't step on that.
I have no idea. I have no idea, but she was sitting there on, in the property for about an hour with the U-Haul trailer slum opened.
Do you have a forwarding address for her? No one does?
She thinks she left the floor.
She hasn't been into some of this stuff.
Okay. Well, she told us that, I, actually, the county health nurse may have one. She may have access to it, because she came to get the records for the kids so she could put them in school where they were moving. I thought she said she was moving to Alabama.
She's from Arkansas.
Arkansas?
Yeah, that's where she come from.
Okay.
So.
Well, that's where she moved then, because that's, she, she moved back wherever her mom is, so.
Okay, so you will put yellow tape around.
I can put the yellow tape around it, we can put do not enter signs on it, um, and then we can go from there and just see what transpires, I guess.
That all you had, Angie? Thank you for coming, thank you for coming, Cameron.
Thank you.
That all you had, Angie?
Yeah.
Uh, Jeff Seaver, paint town office, estimates.
Just a little spruce enough with just the city, the town office, the one room, not both of them, but the other's paneling.
Not Cherry's area.
No, because that's paneling.
All right. And that's everything?
That's not the paint. That's just their, the two people's time to do it. They said they need to get the paint, and the paint wouldn't matter.
What kind of timeframe you're looking at doing it or something possible?
Yeah, they said they could do it soon after first month, but I told them I needed a little time before they did it, that January is when they were. Well, Jenny Otter's the one that I contacted, and that's who she works with.
All right. I'm okay with it, if you're.
Me too.
Make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we let Dave Felley.
Felley.
Dave Felley painting, paint the, after the first three year.
It's for a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, it's for a hundred and fifty bucks, and we pay it back, so.
My second round. All right, do we have any board appointment reports?
Hey, I got a guy that's interested in the zoning board job that are appointment.
For Ross's position?
Yeah, George Willis. He works for, he's the kid that lives out on the, where the pillars are, where, he works for Farmwell Services, and I think he'd be a good one.
Did you guys get my letter?
I don't know.
It's, right.
Okay. I don't know if anyone else can.
You can do that now, or you can do it just again when you do all the others.
We'll do that. Probably when we get all the other ones.
Yeah, that way they all come do it at the same time, or?
Yeah, it's done.
Okay.
That's good, though. Anyone for EDC?
Uh, maybe.
Okay.
I might have somebody, I don't know.
All right, uh, Jerry?
Yeah, uh, of course, you guys, I just told you that we've done the leaps, had the machine where it's ready to go snow removal. Talked to Peter, was getting, got an update on them today. They're supposed to be here tomorrow to finish up the north well. They couldn't give, go past what their initial point was as far as getting that open back up, but they think they've got the vein opened back up, and where we'll be back up where we were originally, or maybe better, so. They're gonna bring the pump back in. I think they've replaced, I know they've replaced the motor on that originally, and I think they replaced the pump too. And I'll let you know if you want to know, uh, but I believe they're, they're gonna replace the pump at the same time, or after they pull it back out the second time. Then they'll do a pump test, and then I'll, of course, of course, I'll have to get a couple back D samples on that till it comes back good. And I'll let you know, or give you an email or something, let you know what's going on from there, but I believe we'll be back, be able to go back into service. Cross your fingers, because, uh, I don't think it's gonna be feasible to go down past that point where we couldn't, where it's filled in. Because we've originally repaired that line, the casing in that a few years ago, so, uh, you can't go back out where the original drill was, see, which was, was an eight inch well. So they're, it's, they reduced, so when they reline that, then you've lost some space, so now your original drill point will go back out. And it takes a lot of expense to get that open back up, like.
So how deep are you now?
Uh, I believe a hundred and forty something.
All right.
Originally, originally, that was a hundred and, or rated two hundred feet, and we cleaned it out, probably twenty years ago. We cleaned it out, it had seven in the bottom, I suppose we cleaned out about twenty feet or so, I don't know. And that's, that, of course, it's been several years, it's just that stuff gets piled, like powder, it gets in there and just gets like cement, so. Of course, we probably ought to look at, someday look at another well anyway. Maybe look at that other project. I know where there's one set closed, it might be possibly, we could lash our head or something, you know, so, out east of town here. So, you know, if it does itself before then. Just like today, we had a small fire here in town. Uh, we're still down to one well, so all we're capable of doing is watering that well producer. And that's the bad part about having one, you know, getting service on one well when you have two, and then you can, you don't have, you can't, all you're gonna produce is what you got in your one well, so. So that's something we really ought to think about someday.
All right. Anything else?
Uh, I'll do it, I hope. My health's working out really good.
Good.
So.
You all ready for the snow?
Uh, not really, but I'm ready.
Good, thank you. Uh, Marshall's report. Jill reports that she had sixteen calls for service, four assisting another agency, four traffic contacts, and three ordinance violation notices. Well, this is your last meeting. Well, next to last meeting.
We have the end of this one.
Yeah, the new.
Okay. Uh, we had a brief discussion on the unsafe building ordinance, so we don't need to cover that again. The first thing that we have that knew is the agreement with Steve Pearson for helping with the leaf pickup. He did it as a contact, so we just need to have the contract approved. Fifteen dollars.
Where do you want me to sign?
Oh, you may have your sign right there since Brent's not here. Motion and second?
Motion to pay Steve's contract for leaf pickup.
My second.
Next one I have is the contract with the shooting range. The verbiage is the same as what we've had in the past. There's no changes in the shooting range contract?
I'll make a motion with you. Accept the contract for the shooting range for four inch.
Second.
And I have only two copies of signatures on that one.
When we sign as president?
Yeah. Would make you vice president. Let me send it back. Okay. With the changes that are going on, we are going to make a little change with the rail commission. The financial responsibilities have been with the clerk treasurer, with the town of Camden. When you have an agreement change, the interim local agreement will be modified so that the clerk treasurer at Flora will be assuming those duties. And we will be transferring what funds the town has had for the benefit of the rail commission to the town of Flora. Um, I have first of all, a resolution amending the agreement.
There's one other change in there, Pat. Also eliminates the requirement that they, eliminates the requirement that your person you appoint doesn't all, doesn't have to also be a member of the EDC. It still can be, but it doesn't, it, it, the current, the original charter indicated that one member from each town had to also be a member of the EDC. And it just eliminates that requirement.
Okay. So we have the resolution and then we have the agreement.
Do you need a motion about the resolution?
We accept the resolution for our information.
Second, sign.
The town of Flora's already approved it.
They're getting ahead of themselves. They're getting ahead of themselves.
They need ahead of themselves.
They ain't got our money.
They're ahead first.
This is our new agreement and we need two copies of that.
I'm spelling Rendiala. It's a lot of rock out there in the front house.
Okay. And the next little bit I'm just going to read because we're gonna need to have it in the minutes to satisfy the changes with the banking, to transfer the banking responsibilities over to Jeff. But Jeff Seaver will assume the financial duties of the town of Camden effective noon, January first, twenty twenty. And Patricia Castle, these duties will expire eleven fifty-nine PM on January first, twenty twenty. Uh, Mr. Seaver's duties are stated in Indiana Code thirty-six-five dash six dash six. Include that are not limited to receiving care for all town money and pay the money out only on order of the town legislative body. Two, keep accounts showing when and from what sources the clerk treasurer has received town money and when and to whom the clerk treasurer has paid out town money. And three, manage the finances and account to the town and make investment of the town money.
Here, right here, you said PM. Did you mean AM or PM?
That's AM.
Okay.
Yeah, it is AM.
All right.
Yeah, it is AM because.
We thought, we thought it was midnight, the thirty-first, and it's not.
You're saying PM.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So I want to make sure it's correct.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
But it is noon, so, and that's off of the powers and duties, it's an outlandish action. The year in meeting is December thirtieth in the town office at nine o'clock. And I have a little thing that I'm just gonna read to you. I'm gonna thank. Is it really?
Yeah.
Happy birthday.
The thirty?
Yeah.
As most of you know.
You spent all the meeting on my.
Yeah.
As most of you know, this is my last regular council meeting and I will retire with my last day of office being December thirty-first. The time is simply right for me to make this decision and turn the reins over to the next elected clerk treasurer, who will be Jeff Seaver. I find to use my free time to do a few things I will enjoy and spend a little time traveling. Jeff has been coming into the office to learn the various systems and what the job entails, so I'm confident the transition will be smooth. Um, as those I'd like to thank, I'd like to start by thanking Linda Redelk, who was my first deputy. And when she retired, Lynette Martin took over. The office would not have run smoothly without their help. The deputy is vital to the running of the office and both ladies were very helpful to me. I also want to thank Ann Briggs and her staff. Um, Ann has been great to have and Kent has been great to work with, so I do appreciate all of their help. Much has been accomplished during my years in the office due to the cooperation between the town council and the clerk treasurer's office. It takes a goal to achieve, it takes a team to achieve our goals. And I have been blessed to work with many people who care so much of our Camden. During years, the years I have worked as clerk treasurer, the town has been awarded four point three million in various grants. Some were very large projects such as the water project, stormwater, sewer, and the street grants. Other grants were much smaller, where we bought equipment like a police car and will be back. One of my favorite grants though, were the housing rehab grants. We did receive four of those. When I came into office, receiving that grant was one of the things I had set a goal as. I had heard about those grants. I liked them. We've received four of them. We were able to help many households improve their homes because of those grants. And that was my, probably my favorite thing, were those particular types of grants. Because the citizens received direct benefit. And it enabled some of those who may not have been able to stay in their homes to stay in their homes. Um, and to the wonderful people who have worked so hard to make these accomplishments possible, I say thank you. And to the citizens in Camden, it has been an honor to serve you as clerk treasurer. So thank you.
Thank you. No, I mean, is she done?
Yes.
New business. Did we ever get an estimate on the medical center?
We got it all, but we never. We said we could do it, but then we never.
I think, I was going to last meeting.
Yeah, well, you were supposed to look for some work for him and that's what we kinda was waiting on to see if you had any more form before we went on the cut.
I didn't know that. I must not have seen that. I thought, I thought you'd left it if you'd sent it to Love and Sport Memorial to see what they would do.
Well, we did. Did they ever get back with us?
They have not gotten back.
Okay, I'll call Linda tomorrow. If it's okay with you, Mark, I'll call Linda tomorrow and put them all back in her court.
You say you sent that to me already?
Yeah, I'm gonna break now.
I, Mike, if you have that, resend it to me. I'll look through mine. Cause I only get Gmail.
What you call it? Brent said when you sent it to him, you didn't get all over or it didn't come across or his phone, I don't know. He said it's what I got.
All right, I'll send it to you.
All right. Um, was that right after last meeting last month? So I'll look and I get to work in the morning. RFQ for engineer water planning study. Do the town on the snow loader then two PM, January eighteen, twenty.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, I'm sorry. Interviews are expected to take place that week of the twentieth. In addition to the contract is expected to be awarded the week of January twentieth.
Now, the RFQs will be, they are due by the January thirteenth at two o'clock. Your setting of interviews and awarding the contract, that date can be flexible. So if you choose to set other dates, you can do that.
All right.
But, um, they are due to the office on the thirteenth.
Okay, old business, employee health insurance.
No decision was made at the last meeting as to what you wanted to do with the health insurance.
There was one.
The one plan that had been talked about had a twenty percent deductible on the office business, inpatient and urgent care. Then I came over and talked to Jerry and AJ. There was another plan that the deductible increases slightly. But then there is zero deductible. Your premium on the one with the twenty percent actually goes up three point two, two percent. And on the others, two point seven four percent.
Did you want to stay at the one you got, Jerry? It's just, or what?
I don't remember.
I talked to, when I talked to Jerry, I told him about this one and the first, and he said the best one was the one that was.
Closest from what we got is not these, but it's, you guys are the boss.
What was that one again?
So it goes up three point two percent of what he's got. The only thing is it changed down at the end, twenty percent. But at the front end of the.
When his deductible's twenty percent?
Yeah.
Yeah, right now it's zero.
That's on the visits. That's not counting the.
Yeah.
You still got your other deductible.
Yeah.
The maximum out of pocket.
The other one, the one that, the one that went up two point seven, it stayed zero at the end, but down here at this end was real high.
So you must have stayed with the one.
That's up to you guys.
That's what Jerry told me.
This one right here was the first preference.
Yeah.
But after talking, then this one was talked about, so I don't wish you guys more than.
Jerry? Want to stay at the one you got, except?
Well, we don't have one. We're not gonna stay with the one we got. We'll have to change it to something. I don't know. I want to get the, I want to stay at the one I got the card over already for.
How's that?
We've already got three.
This one, the deductible for the individual is forty-five. And for the maximum out of pocket is fifty-five, what they, for the individual, eleven thousand family, nine thousand family. On this one, it's sixty-six family, eleven thousand maximum out of pocket, but it's zero to be back to.
I want the affordable one. That's the one I want.
This was the one that was presented at the meeting.
You wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion. It'll be that one there. Okay.
Is that the one you want?
Yeah, yeah, if that's what Jerry and Linda and them guys were visiting with.
I'll second it.
I'll get a whole plan and something.
Get a whole plan.
Uh, apprentice program. That was presented last meeting.
We never do that.
Qualifying.
Um, tech pointing around the medical building. Do we know anybody who's working on that? Brent was working on most of this, so. Uh, new EDC contract, uh, Brent's not here on the camera. What's the paint coming up on the floor in the community doing?
It's peeling up.
Where at?
In the ladies restroom. They're in there if they possibly come out and clean the building.
Okay, what we can do around?
Uh, just a brief mention about the EDC contract. Um, I believe she's coming in January is what I read in the, we have a board meeting in the morning. But I write down in the minutes that she plans to go to the January meeting.
Don't hold your breath.
Has there been any talk, because we're not invoiced for our dues in twenty nineteen, has been any talk about the dues?
Yeah, we had some discussion about it. To my knowledge, they wanted to get the contract with the commissioners approved first. And therefore it would be structured the same in all the other communities, so. I'm not certain, but I think they only signed a one-year contract.
That's what she told Burlington last night. She was there.
Yeah, she went to Burlington last night.
It's a one year and it stayed the same.
They, uh, county reduced their allocation quite a bit, I think.
They did originally, but I think it, I think they may have modified that to get it back to the regular ten fifty per person, actually, for next year.
So we have not been invoiced for twenty nineteen?
No.
And I have that money hanging there. If I'm gonna pay twenty nineteen dues in twenty twenty, that's going to cause an issue because it's not in the budget.
But it's shit's issue.
How long, how long's our contract been?
Well, the contract expired in June, wasn't it? And that was an issue. The debate was how can you bill a community if you're not under contract? Even though you budgeted it the year before, so that was the biggest issue from what I understood.
Well, I, I have to have a contract to pay.
The commissioners approved at their meeting, I believe, to pay the twenty nineteen amount that was originally budgeted, even though they aren't under contract.
What's their new contract, Sue?
New contract is the same dollar amount and it's for just one year. And it's a calendar year.
And Burlington voted on theirs, sir?
So those are the first two communities. She had down in the notes that she would be here January ninth, so Thursday night?
She can come Thursday, but we won't here.
I could have wondered if that was the right date. I just looked that up, so. And that she's doing the city Delphi that week, I think, in Flora.
Is Burlington then paying the nineteen dues or the twenty dues?
Burlington's paying nineteen, but they signed a contract for twenty.
Okay.
Also.
So if she doesn't come to twenty and we don't have a contract, what are we supposed to?
So I don't, there's no plan. I might as well do a contract from June to December. It's just for January to December was my understanding.
State Board of Accounts would require one.
I think they probably would.
Did she do two top contracts season last night?
I don't remember that often.
Okay. I didn't see that. Yeah, I didn't see that in the notes, so.
And they accepted the ten fifty a person without question?
For one year, so I have.
Has she been to Flora yet, you know?
No, she's not been to Flora or Delphi. She'll do that in January.
Okay.
I'll, I'll be there in the morning for the board meeting and I can mention, what do you need as far as to pay nineteen? Will you need a whole separate contract or?
I thought I have a contract.
Okay. Okay, I'll mention that in the morning.
Okay.
And, okay. When's your next, when's the January meeting?
Eight.
No, it doesn't mean we'll accept the contract.
No, 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 I understand. Yep.
Our next meeting's eight.
Okay.
Well, there would be the year end.
We meet on the second.
Yeah, we meet on the thirtieth at nine.
You could still do it on the thirtieth.
December the thirtieth.
I don't want to do it on the thirtieth. I got other things to do. March, go.
Well, and it would be, I mean, it is a public meeting, but it's not.
No, I understand, but I don't really want to discuss EDC on the thirtieth.
Okay. Okay, I'll mention that in the morning.
Okay.
Um, thank you, Julie. Um, utility adjustment request.
We do have one. The person who is listed there, Mr. Horsenbeck, bought a property here in town that he'd sat empty for a while. His first month, he had part of leak. He thought he had it fixed. We realized later it wasn't fixed, so his leak carried over to two months. The town could give, the clerk treasurer's office could give an adjustment on his first bill, which we get. He's now requesting an adjustment on the second bill because of the leak carrying over.
How much was the adjustment in the first month?
Uh, we adjusted our four. Three hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents.
In the second month, he's asking for?
We will adjust, uh, about a hundred and ninety dollars.
And it's a one-time thing then?
I'll make a motion that we.
It's one time a year.
Yeah, he can make one. So he's done it for this year, so.
So is he living in the property?
He is living in the property.
He couldn't make it tonight because he worked last night.
Yeah, and he did send a handwritten note about it.
Where's the Mitch Proctor handle?
It's the gray house on.
Oh, on the side score, North North Side School.
Yeah, yeah.
You make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we did just.
I have a second.
I'm glad somebody's on the place.
Costs us more than that to move it.
Yeah.
Uh, is that it? You got anything you need there?
I do.
State your.
Nope, nope, we're good, that's it.
Any disputed ordinances, violations, public, public comments?
We have, well, I'm okay, you wanna say it, Helen, do you want me to?
You can.
Okay, on December thirtieth, there'll be an open, a retirement open house for Pat here at the library from four to six. She didn't wanna put it on the agenda because she didn't want people to know about it, but people will know about it.
But I do appreciate, it's not that I don't appreciate, but there's a lot of people who have done a lot for the community.
You could say it's my birthday party.
Sure, because we, it's March's birthday party.
Mark's birthday, Pat's retirement party.
It's not one person who's done it, it takes a lot of people.
Well, I know, but we ain't gave up yet, so.
We ain't quitters.
All that I am.
So, I mean, in all honesty, we appreciate all you've done, Pat.
And really, I have enjoyed every minute in that office. There's just been some frustration.
I was gonna say, not every minute, because.
Surprised me to say.
Oh, he looks amazing.
But I have enjoyed it, I hope Jeff enjoys it as much as I have, and I wish everybody luck with it.
Thank you. Um, any other public comments?
Patton has done a phenomenal job. She's been on the chamber board for several years. She'll have one more year with us, so, uh, her term is up at the end of next year.
You want to send on EDC board?
There you go. Have some time, that's a great idea.
Don't get her on too many boards, because I got her, I got her on the library board, so I need to keep her there.
And again, Chambers has been fun too. We've got a lot accomplished, we've got some good goals set and.
Julie, what's the status of the building, Select Seed Building?
So.
Is there a plan or?
We officially own it, I have some, something to do at the courthouse still this month, but, um, it's going to be a good two to three years before we're able to do a whole lot there, so. Um, I mean, the idea is to turn it into a rural innovation center with a, um, an ag focus. So ag innovation, make it something that people can access, especially both school systems. We've got several ag-related partners interested in helping, um, so we'll, we'll do some fundraising, we'll have a better plan. Once we get one building done, then we'll move on to Camden, so.
What's the plan on the Delphi building, is it?
Delphi building, we applied for another grant, uh, last week and are up for another grant to do some other work on it, so. We're kind of in limbo right now, but we're gonna start meeting regularly and figure out exactly how we can get things done, but, yeah, it's, it processes moving along, so.
Good.
Keep us posted.
Oh, I certainly will, yeah.
We can need to help you out.
Yeah, it's, uh, it'll be quite a project, so.
Council comments, you got anything, Andy? I think I'm good. Um, I just wanna wish everybody a happy holidays, have a safe and merry, merry Christmas and a happy new year. Uh, we're meeting again on the thirtieth, so we'll wrap the year end up and, you know, looking forward to working with you, Jeff, for the future, so.
Looking forward to, I think, if I start, some days I'm okay, some days I feel pretty stupid.
Alright, um, any miscellaneous, anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. My second.
Where's the next?
Yeah, stop my office, just next to me, please.
Is anybody in there?
Uh, just, uh, it was right at four thirty, so it was just the lady up front there, which was just coming back from board, I thought.
No way, where, where do you think my office is?
I thought it was your office.
Uh-uh, I'm in the old antique store building.
So you're not out of the, uh.
I'm not out in the.
Who's that lady?
That's the EDC.
Okay, I got two EDCs.
That's actually.
So I gotta find her office too, because I found two of them. I'm gonna have ten minutes to turn.